Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the October 7th, 2019 Town Council Meeting. This evening we need to begin with an executive session to discuss Wood subdivision litigation because an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town. The intent is to resume with an open meeting beginning at 7:00 PM. So at this time I will entertain a motion for a roll call vote to enter executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Again, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Shines.
Aye.
Counselor May.
Aye.
Vice Chair Santos. Counselor Dinaco and Counselor Smith-Galvin. And myself as well. So six to zero, we'll now go into executive session again with the expectation of arriving back at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening again, Wakefield and welcome back. We are now going to begin our open meeting at 7:03 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda will be item number three, and this is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a very special guest tonight. I'd like to introduce Alec Ross. Tonight we welcome Alec to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Alec is a senior at Wakefield Memorial High School and was recently recognized in a ceremony at the State House last week for his outstanding academic achievement in the study of the Italian language. Alec received a scholarship from the Dona 2000 Association, Cassit Centro Ativita Scholaris Italian, and the Italian consulate of Boston.
Dr. Rossky, Dr. D.
Thank you. We as a community are very proud of your accomplishment Alec, and I am pleased to share your tremendous accomplishment with this Town Council and with the entire Wakefield community. So with that I ask you to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do I have to grab the thing?
Nope.
All right, excellent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you Alec, we appreciate you being here.
And well done.
Thank you.
Can you say that on the down? I can't. If I can remember it. But thank you.
Item number four on tonight's agenda is the attendance, and I see that all seven counselors are present, as well as Madam Clerk, our Town Administrator, and our Town Council. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes for tonight's approval. The first set would be the September 23rd, 2019 regular Town Council meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion at this time for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the approval of the September 23rd, 2019 regular Town Council meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of seven to zero, the motion passes. Item 5B is approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2019, executive session of the Town Council. I'll entertain a motion for approval at this time?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinaco. Any discussion on those minutes? Actually, there cannot be. And those have been reviewed by counselors, they were distributed in advance and reviewed, and I heard no comments from anyone on them. So with that, the motion before you is the approval of the executive session minutes from September 23rd, 2019. All those counselors in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a seven to zero unanimous vote, the motion carries. Item number six on the agenda is public engagement. This is the opportunity for members of our community to come before the council to address any issues of concern or make any announcements. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that's signed up for public engagement this evening?
Yes Chairman, we have Bob Melhight.
Good evening, if you could just identify yourself and your address.
My name's Bob Melhight, 157 Montrose Ave. So I appreciate everybody giving me the time tonight to speak on a few different, or on one different thing here. So I'm just going to read a prepared statement. We have noticed on the agenda this evening that there will be a discussion and possibly a vote on removing the benches from the downtown district. I would like to ask that they remain in the downtown district previously approved by the Town Council. The benches area are part of the patronicity community outreach program, which you all know about. As part of this program, over 200 community members and organizations donated money, ultimately raising over $58,000. This was a true community building event. The community donated with the notion that the benches were for the downtown district. Ten of these benches were bought by private parties and organizations for $1,000 with a stipulation that they could choose the spot for the bench. The Flapes family, who has a special connection to Cravings, the Class of 66, the Wakefield Rotary Club, and the Savings Bank, among others, all had particular spots in mind when they donated. To move these benches would go against the wishes of those strong community members, as well as make Wakefield Main Streets. In addition, the moving entirely out of the downtown district, as suggested to make away J.J. Round and the Dog Park, is going against the very idea of the patronicity program, which was to help the downtown merchants and help create an active and vibrant and welcoming downtown community. Wakefield Main Streets understands and recognizes the difficulties that some may face as they go through many of life's challenges. We support the town's efforts to come to an amicable solution to the issues that affect some of our community members, our downtown merchants, and the strength of our community, the Wakefield families. We have always and will always continue to support the downtown community and the Wakefield community in general. However, moving the benches to address the issues downtown is not the answer. All that does is push the issue down the road. There are good people using those benches every day to rest, like our neighbors at Brightview, to sit and have an ice cream at Cravings, wait for tables outside one of our many restaurants, or read a new book outside the library. This is the fabric of our community. Moving the benches is not the answer. Addressing the issues with outreach, family support, and social services is already being done by the town, and I would ask that we continue to strive on those agendas and keep moving forward with those, rather than just move the benches. It's a necessary road we all must take together every day. This is what Wakefield does to build their community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Melhight.
And just Bob, just to be clear, and we get to talk if we want to. We're not removing the benches, we're shifting some of them.
Right.
So we're not taking, certainly we want to keep benches downtown. We may not, the configuration is something we're going to talk about, and there's a lot of concern with business owners and citizens based on some of the configuration now, but our intent is to keep many, many of the benches downtown. So I think you'll hear the conversation, and taking your thoughts into account, some of the counselors, you know, counselors may appreciate the idea of moving some to other places, but my understanding is we're keeping an awful lot downtown and actually shifting some that don't have them in downtown to, in front of those businesses. So I didn't want people to think that we were like, poof, getting rid of the benches.
No, and I'm, may I respond?
You may.
Hopefully I didn't send that message. I understand that some of the benches are remaining downtown and that they're going to be reconfigured, you know, separated and all, and things like that. I do have concerns obviously about where they're, you know, the ones that are moving outside the district.
Sure.
And the general idea of why they're being moved.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public participation?
Yes, we do. Lauren Rotondo and her husband, William.
Hi.
Good evening, if you could just identify yourself and your address, please.
My name's Lauren Rotondo, I'm the owner of First Energy Heating at 924 Main Street. And we've got a big problem about the parking in the Greenwood area now that they've implemented the two-hour parking limit. And also with one in particular parking person, a woman, we've had several problems with her as far as ticketing. But basically the issue is, is we had no problem parking there before, but now that they've put two hours in front of our building, as well as other businesses in that area, they really haven't offered any suggestion as to where we're supposed to park all day. Well, I got about $100 worth of tickets, and some of the tickets I got from this particular person, we weren't even parked there, because we made, we made an issue one time of parking, you know, and not giving us enough time to get out there and move the car. And since then, she's, she came into the park, into our driveway, took pictures of all our license plates, hides in the honeydew parking lot, and writes the tickets and sticks them on the car. My husband was picking me up at the hospital on August 23rd, and she had a ticketed for him being parked there between 11:00 and 2:30, and he was at the hospital. I couldn't get the footage from Melrose Wakefield Security, they wouldn't give it to me, but that's where he was at that time. He just got a ticket today. This is why I'm actually here, is because today he got a ticket. He wasn't, he parked in front of the building, he wasn't there two hours, he went somewhere else, came back, parked, and she just automatically assumed he was there for two hours, gave him a ticket, so I went out and spoke with her, and she in turn called the cops on me, two police cars pull up, the whole nine yards, you know, that she's doing her job. But basically, the last time I went down to City Hall and I paid $100 worth of parking tickets, I went upstairs and I got six merchant parking passes. Now, I got them for all my employees. The only problem is, is when you go look for a parking space that is merchant, for the merchants, they're full. I mean, there are no spots. I mean, you're selling 100 merchant parking passes and only providing 50 parking spaces.
There's no merchant.
There is none, it's not available. Then we were told the merchant parking was only four hours. Then we were told to park down by the Melrose Wakefield building that says no parking between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM, and then 3:00 and 6:00 PM. You can't park there, but we were told, but people have been towed from that area, all right, yet we're told to park there. There is no place for us to park. I mean, we need sufficient amount of parking. You can either park in front of Batten Brothers, all those spaces are taken by the Batten Brothers employees, or around Oak Street, and there always, there is nothing, there's nothing available, you know. So we need some clarification. I mean, if you want to implement this parking, I can understand downtown you've got plenty of parking, but there's only so much. I mean, you can't make a parking lot in Greenwood. You know, I get tickets, $25 tickets, I get two and three of them a day. I got three today. I mean, I've been down to the Town Hall three times, I've actually gone down to the police station once, they in turn told me to go to City Hall, City Hall tells me to go to the police department. I've gone to the parking clerk, he just says he just follows the rules, he has nothing to do with it. There's no way to dispute these tickets when you get one, because there's no area on that particular ticket as if you were getting a road violation to dispute it. You either have to make more parking, I mean, we're willing to pay more to park, I mean, I'm getting whacked with $25, $75 tickets a day. I mean, and it's not the man, the man doesn't, you know, who's the meter person, or whatever you want to call them, he doesn't give us a problem, it's the woman. She insists she's doing her job, but she's also harassing us at this point. So either you have to make more parking, be a little more, let us know where we're supposed to park, what we're supposed to do. And then there's the issue of harassment.
Okay.
By this particular woman.
I thank you for raising these concerns. You had mentioned you were looking for some clarification, so hopefully I can provide some for you, so that will, this will help you a bit in the process. The parking in Greenwood used to be one-hour parking, so the idea of timed or limited parking in Greenwood on Main Street is not new. It used to be one hour, back as of July, it was changed from one hour to two hours, so we actually doubled the amount of parking that had previously been available to everyone in Greenwood. So this is enhanced parking enforcement, but it's new, it's not new parking regulations.
Well, I've been there for 10 years and we've never had an issue. Never.
That may be the case, and again, that's, it's enhanced enforcement of what was already in place, but we actually expanded to two hour from the one hour. Also, the four-hour spots, if you have a merchant pass, merchants are not subject to a four-hour limitation. The signs clearly say four hours, because it was expressed to us as a body that some people were looking for more than two hours to be able to do their business, either in Greenwood or downtown, and so it's either four-hour parking or merchant, and the merchant does not have a four-hour limitation.
Okay, another question. If we park in one spot in two hours and we move the car in an hour and 45 minutes to another spot somewhere else, are we still, still subject to a ticket?
Well, you would, you would not be under those rules, but what I would say is that you had mentioned in your remarks that you are consistently parking in front of your business, and I can say that everything that, that we have heard and seen relative to how to improve economic, you know, development and vibrancy in the community is for business owners to not park in, for right in front of their building, because it is, it's.
Well, I'm just saying that particular time he parked in front of the building, but we've been, we've been shuffling cars around every hour and 45 minutes, and we're still getting tickets, because she's telling us, well, you're still parked on the street, whether you're here or whether you're here.
I can't speak, I can't speak to that piece, but I can say that if you're parked in different spots, then that certainly is, is a different issue, although also bear in mind that the reason we've created these merchant zones is so merchants can be in them, and so that you're not taking, or occupying the spots that would otherwise be available to customers.
That's fine, but there aren't enough spots for merchants.
And I think what you raised is an important point, I'm going to actually be speaking to this later on this evening too, in terms of what we're looking to do from the merchant perspective. Greenwood, there are some issues in Greenwood relative to merchant parking, and if we have to redesignate or differently designate, that's part of what we can do with the Traffic Advisory Committee as well, to make sure that we're optimizing. The goal here is to optimize our parking, so if we find that the merchant demand is greater than the customer demand, then we can make some tweaks to it. You know, that's not a question, but you had also mentioned.
Well, we definitely need some clarification as to if I move my, my car from this spot down the street to this spot, am I still subject to the two-hour limit? I mean, and also clarification on where exactly is merchant parking, and the only reason why we're shuffling the cars around in front of the business is because all the merchant parking is taken.
Now, do you have a parking lot?
I do, but I keep my service fees in there, and I shouldn't have to if I do park in the lot, but I shouldn't have to.
And I'm, I was just asking, not suggesting, I was just asking what you had, and so the other piece too, you mentioned about dispute, if you, if you do believe you've been issued a ticket that, that is unwarranted, there is a mechanism. We do have a parking clerk, and the parking clerk has the authority to be able to listen to any appeals and then address that issue, so I would encourage you if you believe that you have.
Well, I did, I went between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, one morning, and to address the issue of the car not even being there and having a ticket, he wasn't there. So then I went to see Mr. Mayo at that time, you know, when I explained, but I still ended up paying the ticket, you know, I mean, I wasn't going to be late.
I would encourage you, if you do believe that you have, you wrongly received the ticket, I would encourage anyone, if you have, of course, go to the parking clerk, and, and if you can provide, you know, any sort of documentation or anything else that, that supports that in fact it was issued in error, of course, you know, humans make mistakes, and if that is the case, we want to remedy that.
Well, are you making more merchant parking space available?
We are, yes, we're looking into that, yes. We're looking how, how to create more merchant spaces so that if, if the demand in Greenwood for merchant spaces exceeds, I should point out too, we do, we have more than 50 merchant spots currently, you had mentioned 50, just in one lot alone next to Alma Headquarters, we have more than 50 spots. And the merchant passes that we've given out, we've given out more than that number, because merchants work in different shifts, so not every employee is there at the same time, and so that's, we're cognizant of that.
That's mostly a business of people who are open from 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning until 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 at night, it's not a.
Your business, yes, but there's, there's others that are not necessarily that case, but we hear what you're saying, and we need to be responsive to that. So, so we thank you for the comments.
Well, we do need more spaces, and at least write up some kind of clarification, because the signs are very confusing. I've been told many different things, what I can do, what I can't do, but in the meanwhile, I still keep getting parking tickets. The one clarification I would like is if I'm parked over here and I move the car in an hour forty-five minutes over here, am I still subject to a ticket?
I can say the answer is no, you're not, but I would encourage you that it's best practice for merchants to be parking in merchant zones, because it enables then your customers to be able to park in those.
That's no problem, as long as there's a space available.
Understood, and if, and if we need to do a better job of that, then absolutely that's something that we have to be focused on. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate you raising the concern. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mary, Mary Eldridge.
If you could just identify yourselves and your address, please. Addresses.
We can sit together, I think. There's two of us, as you can see. Mary Eldridge, 52 Oak Street, I'm here for the Hartshorn House in Wakefield.
Alan Drinkwater, 41 Church Street, The Mighty Heart shown itself, also speaking on behalf of the house.
Yes, we're here tonight to talk about our second annual beer tasting evening, which is going to be November 9th. It's called Bone Up Brewery. We'll be providing the beer there in Everett, and I'm going to turn this over to Alan, as Alan used to work there, and he brought this idea to the board. He was a little timid to do that, he wasn't sure that we'd buy in at all, but we certainly did, and we had a very successful night, which is why we want to do this again.
Thanks Mary, yeah, so just to echo Mary's sentiments, I brought this idea to the Board of Directors at the Hartshorn last year, admittedly a little bit timid about coming to the Hartshorn as a new caretaker, suggesting that we have a fundraiser based around beer, but luckily everyone was receptive to it, and the event was really, really successful last year, and so we're hoping to have the same sort of success this year. As Mary mentioned, I worked, some of you might know, but I live at 41 Church Street, The Hartshorn, but I also sort of live at 60 Farm Street, the high school. But just for some, for some side cash, I worked at this brewery, Bone Up Brewing in Everett, for six months, a couple of years ago, and I was just overwhelmed by how accommodating and warm and welcoming the husband and wife team, Liz and Jared Karali, who own and operate the brewery, were. And while I was working there, I noticed that they do, or still do, quite a bit of custom brewing, they would do like weddings, they would do family functions, and so although I was no longer working for them, I asked them, like, how would you guys feel about doing some sort of historically inspired beer? And they were gung ho. And so last year, they brewed the, the first batch of Hartshorn Ale, and they're currently working on the second batch of Hartshorn Ale, which again, will be available November 9th, if you make your way out to the tasting, and we hope you all do. But it's not just a night of tasting beer, although that is great in its own right. We are trying to really honor the marriage of past and present, historic house with the current trend of microbrews. So throughout the night, there is the, the sampling of beers, but there's also three distinct presentations. So Liz and Jared, the owners of Bone Up Brewing, they give a presentation about entrepreneurship in 2019 and what it's like to be in the craft beer industry, just young upstarts, they had both had, you know, the normal nine-to-five jobs and jumped ship to pursue their passion of brewing, and so they give a presentation. We have a presentation from professor, a history professor, he teaches at Northeastern and Simmons College, Dr. Malcolm Purinton, and he got his PhD by researching and writing about beer in the colonies, and basically the transatlantic beer trade, for lack of a better expression. So he gives presentation on what beer looked like around the time of the founding of the Hartshorn, 1681, up through present day. And then we also have a presentation from our very own Nancy Bertrand, who covers Wakefield history and specifically the history of the house. So it really is a pretty incredible marriage of past and present, as I said, and we're really excited to get the benefit to do it again. Like, cover what I miss, Mary, I always miss something.
No, at the time, there'll be two sessions on November 9th, it goes from 5:00 to 7:00, the first session, and then we have a break to get reorganized in the house, and then the second session is 7:00.
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10, yes, right, okay. And that's on November 9th, the Saturday right before Veterans Day weekend. So thank you for having us, we appreciate you listening to us, and we hope we can see you all there to, to raise a tankard with us.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No.
All right, so in that case, since you're here, I'll actually, I'd like to move to take item 11A out of order, and item 11A is actually the application for a one-day liquor license for the very event you've just heard about. So this would be for a fundraiser at the Hartshorn House for the maintenance and upkeep of the historic home. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the one-day liquor license for the Hartshorn House on November 9th, 2019, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, located at 41 Church Street. All those in favor? All right, seeing a vote of seven to zero, congratulations and good luck on your event. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for hearing us. And for voting.
The next item I propose we move forward on is actually item number eight. I see that we have a number of members of our Board of Health here, and they have a presentation for this evening, so if I could ask the Board of Health to come up next, we'll go to item number eight first.
Will you wait till we get to your part? Ruth Clay, I'm the Director of the Health Department, just to be clear, the Board is different from the Health Department, and we're going to get into that. So, we were asked to come and give an overview of the Health Department, which I'm happy to do, and, ew, no. So, we're just going to start with, the Board of Health originally had done some strategic planning, had come up with a mission statement, which is where we always go back to about why we're doing what we're doing, how we get to that point, and what we do, or at least most of what we do. So, the mission that the Board came up with is to promote the personal and environmental health of the community. We achieve, we achieve this through education and policy development, supported by enforceable regulations and collaboration with other people and organizations, and that's our guiding philosophy. So, how do we get there? So I'm going to talk about the Board of Health itself, our staff, and our resources. So, just a primer on Boards of Health, Boards of Health are actually established by state statute in Massachusetts. It's a very old, actually the oldest tradition in the country about Boards of Health, the first chairman of, fun fact, first chairman of the Board of Health in Boston was Paul Rivera, which tells you how old it is. In Wakefield, not quite as old, we do have a three-member elected Board of Health, in some communities they're appointed, in some they're elected. Here, they are elected. We have one of the members of the Board of Health here tonight, whoop, where are you, Laurel? Laurel Goreville is one of our members of our Boards of Health, of the Board of Health. And the Board basically has a couple of charges. The Board sets policy, so it decides what kinds of programs we're going to do, what kinds of programs we're not going to do. It promulgates regulations, so the Board of Health is one of the only, I think Conservation is the only other Board that sets its own laws. So Board of Health regulations have effect of a law or a bylaw. And the background of that, and it's been challenged many times in court, is any reasonable regulation, and the courts have determined that in an extremely broad way. And ultimately enforcing the regulations. On a day-to-day basis, the staff enforces the regulations, but we're doing that on behalf of the Board, and we do have processes in place that at some point, sometimes it does have to get to the Board, and like in a housing case, they're always afforded the opportunity to appeal, and the appeal goes to the Board of Health. So, staff. We have awesome staff, some of which, most of actually are here, and I'm going to introduce you. Our staff is very qualified, both through education and/or experience. We have a strong emphasis on professional development and, and find funds every which way to support professional development, including the budget, especially with public health. Things are changing all the time, the regulations are changing all the time, the issues are changing, and it's really important that we stay on top of that. Our staff is very customer service oriented, and as a department, we're very community service oriented, and we work with a lot of the organizations in the community. So, how do we do this? Well, primarily, obviously, we have the municipal budget, but that's a finite amount of resources, and the town has a finite amount of availability, so the Health Department is actually pretty innovative in looking at other ways of maximizing resources and leveraging resources. So, as you know, the first thing we do is we have a shared services agreement with the city of Melrose. So, most of our staff are. So most of our staff are shared staff with the City of Melrose. We work a lot with other organizations such as WAVE. Those, WAVE has a lot of the same underlying risk factors that substance abuse does. So when one's addressing a risk factor, it's addressing both programs. So Catherine does a lot of work with WAVE. She's also now on the Board for the Food Pantry. So we really try to get involved with other organizations to work together with them. We have a lot of grants, we have federal grants, state grants, and we use interns. We, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of colleges in the area and we take advantage of their internship requirements and almost always have an intern working in the office, which is a win-win situation. So what do we do? I spared you bringing my big poster that says "Public Health A to Z", because we really do things A to Z, whether it's asbestos and body art to vaping and zoonotic diseases. So depending on the day and the phone call, it depends on what we're doing that day. So I started with an organization chart. Kind of gives you programming and people. The people, the positions that are in blue are actually regional positions, except for the recovery coach, which I made a mistake and that should be in black at the bottom, but by then it was too late and I couldn't change it. So I'm in the middle there. So, and I report to both the Board of Health and to the Town Administrator. We have a full-time administrative assistant who is Cindy, right there. And Kara Showers is our Mass in Motion person. Where's Kara? Kara's right there. And we're going to talk about Mass in Motion and that position is shared with Melrose. Our Health Inspectors, Coral's here, Coral's here, right there, also shared with Melrose. Our Tobacco Control Coordinator, Maureen, right there, who I think most of you know, is actually a regional position and covers five towns. We have a Regional Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator, also covers more than five towns and is primarily focused on alcohol. Our Regional Opiate Prevention Coordinator, who is out of Medford and covers about seven towns, is also, and I should say those three positions are all funded through state grants, through the State Health Department, multi-year grants. Our Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator, who I know you know, Catherine Dingra, right there, is federally grant-funded and just Wakefield. Our Youth Substance Abuse Coordinator actually is also Kara. We maximize our resources and that's also funded out of the same federal grant. And we're one of the few communities that has a recovery coach and we're going to talk about that a little further and that is just Wakefield. We also have a Public Health Nurse that we shared with Melrose, who is Karen, right there. And I want to thank everybody for coming. I think it's nice to have a face associated with the names. So our Mass in Motion Coordinator, who I showed was Kara, is a state health grant through DPH. It's a 12-hour-a-week position, shared with Melrose, so you can, there's only a certain amount, obviously, that we can do within 12 hours. But Kara does a lot of different things. She works with the Planning Department on complete streets and envision Wakefield because there's a lot of the master planning done in our community about including bike lanes and pedestrian-friendly crosswalks and all that, which is all part of moving more and eating better. The Safe Roots to School Program. We've done, she's done a number of projects with our Youth Action Team, which we're going to talk about. She's currently doing a community food assessment, looking at where the healthy food is and isn't. And at the end of October, hopefully, we'll see you all at the Third Annual Healthy Living Expo, which also focuses on eating better and moving more. So our Health Inspectors, I really, is an A to Z kind of a thing. We enforce the state sanitary code, which is primarily what they do. The state sanitary code includes a food code, a housing code, a camp code, a pool code, tanning code. They change a lot and there's interpretations a lot. So we are actually, we have, the Board of Health adopted them all on a local level. So when we're enforcing them, we can use the ticketing bylaw and issue tickets. So they're also a state regulation and local. We also have Department Environmental Protection regulations that they promulgate and give to us to enforce. Title V, there is still, you know, a certain number of septic systems in Melrose, yeah. In Wakefield, there's also a very broad regulation that deals with dust, odor, and noise, which is kind of a public nuisance thing, but their regulation. We respond to a lot of nuisance complaints, mostly trash, rodents, depending on the time of year, and more and more houses that owners aren't keeping up with them. We also do mosquito control, which is a current issue. That's all environmental health kinds of things. As far as mosquito control goes, this has been a big year for mosquito control, as you know, with triple E. Wakefield has remained at the low-risk level, which is fortunate. We are, we have not received a hard frost yet. So although the mosquito activity level has much decreased because the evenings and the nights are cold, it hasn't been eliminated. Traditionally, West Nile virus in triple E cases happen in the fall, not in the summer. So we're really not done with that. So we still continue to advise people to wear mosquito repellent and dress appropriately and not hang outdoors at dusk if not necessary, so. And we're just waiting for the frost. Public Health Nursing, which I said we share with, actually, Public Health Nursing is the first thing that we shared with Melrose and was actually the impetus to us starting this whole shared services agreement. Immunizations you know about with the fluke, obviously, right now. We're also starting up a shingles vaccination program because we know people have had a difficult time getting access to shingle shots at some of the pharmacies. So we are able to purchase it on a limited basis, a little at a time, 10 at a time, and we're doing, we're doing those vaccinations for Wakefield residents. We've just started that program. Communityal Disease Follow-Up, there's a whole list of diagnoses that are made, if a doctor makes, they have to be reported to the Board of Health. It's, the basic idea behind it is so that we can do a little detective work to try to find out where it came from, but also to prevent it from spreading. And Karen does a lot of community outreach, she does some home visits, she consults with the inspectors sometimes when we go into some of the housing cases and we need another opinion. So she's really a jack-of-all-trades and she shares her time back and forth between the two communities. Emergency Preparedness, I work very closely with Tom now, which is awesome. We have a state grant through the feds, through the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition, which is five communities, Melrose, Malden, Medford, Wakefield, and Stonem. We basically apply for all of our grants now as a coalition. We don't apply just as Wakefield anymore. The public health part for emergency preparedness is primarily emergency dispensing sites. That could be a drive-through flu clinic if, or like H1N1, if those of you remember H1N1. It could be a flooding situation where we need to hand out sandbags or pass out water. We have a plan and an infrastructure for doing that, no matter what it's for. We respond to, with obviously, public safety, biological, chemical, and radiological events and we practice. And we have done some tabletops here in the past. We're going to be doing another tabletop exercise, January 15th, to practice emerging infectious disease response. Mental health. So mental health is a part of public health. It's getting a lot more recognition on a, you know, on a federal level, just through the whole country. It's related to a lot of some of the work that we do, but sometimes it's its own issue. More and more of our housing cases, we're finding, have a strong mental health component and we really need assistance to help resolve the issue. The town has a contract with Elliott. Last year, last calendar year, they saw and worked with 332 Wakefield residents and in the first six months of this year, 171. That could be youth, it could be adults, could be either one. And Interface, I know we've talked about Interface, which for, if for the public's perspective, Interface is a program through William James College that allows Wakefield residents to call a hotline during business hours, give them information about what their issue is, what their insurance is, what kind of constraints they have. Do they need public transportation, things like that? And then they're given, there's a little research. Person gets back to them with usually up to three providers that take that person's insurance, address their needs in case they want female or male or whatever. It's very successful, we have a lot of very, very positive feedback. Most of our surrounding communities now also are funding the Interface program, which is great because some of our workers in the school department may not live in Wakefield or some of our other business people may not live in Wakefield. And you can see the numbers, it's still primarily school age. We're working hard to expand that because, you know, it's not just school-age kids. They have the easiest access because there's the staff right there. But we're really working on getting the word out to elderly and also those of us who fall in between those two categories. Yeah, for, at least for now. So, so I wanted to focus on one of our programs, which is substance abuse. And I know that you spent a lot of time with Catherine at your retreat about substance abuse. But it's an important program and it's something, again, we like the public to know about. Our substance, our prevention, regional prevention efforts, we have regional efforts and regional grants and then we also have our local grants and our local work. And Catherine, who's our local person, spends a lot of time working with our regional people so that we're all kind of giving the same message, we're working together. Again, we leverage resources. Tobacco control has gotten a lot of news lately with the vaping. So Maureen covers five communities, as I said. In Wakefield, we have 23 tobacco permits right now. A couple of them are not being used because the facilities are closed. The Board did amend the tobacco regulations so that our number of tobacco permits will be going down over time as places close. We did go to all 23, we, I went to all 23 of the places that have tobacco permits to check on the vaping and all but one had already taken everything off the shelf and the other one, I stood and watched him till he did it. And we continue, you know, and Maureen continues to do tobacco control. There is a bill pending to eliminate the sale of all flavored tobacco products that's being heard, I think this week or next week, at the state level. Substance abuse prevention on a regional basis, as I said, we have Liz Parsons, who works on, just on alcohol issues for the region and very closely, obviously, with Wakefield. And then we have another person out of Medford who specifically works just on opioid issues, again, for the whole region. But Catherine works very closely, they meet regularly and they meet as a group regularly. So now I'm going to turn it over to Catherine, who's going to talk about our local substance abuse program and highlight just two of the current programs. Catherine? And our youth person.
It's all really Claire. This is Claire's presentation through the Youth Action Team. They presented to the Board of Health last week and we wanted to highlight one of the projects that the youth are working on. So I'm going to have Claire talk about the Youth Action Team.
So I'm Claire, I'm a senior at Wakefield High School and this is my third year, I think, as a Youth Action Team leader. And basically, our whole motto is to grow positive flowers and shrink negative weeds. And that has a lot of meaning. So growing positive flowers is like healthy eating, being active in your life, mental health support, connecting to the youth, getting rid of vaping, underage drinking, stuff like that. And shrinking negative weeds is, like I said, like youth vaping, tobacco, nicotine use. And that's just kind of our motto and what we like to go by. We have like a big poster that we put up in the back of all our meetings that says it. And then one of the examples of the projects that we've done is on August 29th, we went to 15 convenience stores in Wakefield to take note of tobacco, nicotine, and drug paraphernalia that they had in stock.
Uh-oh, I didn't do it.
And then we also took note if there was anything that caught our eye that maybe we've never seen before or if there was fruit or other healthy items that were present. And we split it up, I think there was like eight or nine of us, Youth Action Team leaders, and we split it up half and half and we made sure that the same people went to the same stores that we went to last time so we could really kind of compare how it was last time we went. And what we found was at Circle K, AL Prime, Quick and Clean Car Wash, Carousel, 7-Eleven, and McGill's, they all looked pretty good. We went in, we didn't really have any problems. We were in there for like three minutes tops because we looked on our list and everything looked fine. But then, however, we did find some possible violations at some stores and you can see them there. A lot of the things we found were like CBD edibles, multi-pack cigars, flavored, multi-pack cigars, single cigars, just stuff like that. We want to say thank you to Ruth, Cindy, and Maureen, who followed up on all these possible violations with us.
So we do have a local regulation on the banned drug paraphernalia, which is why they were looking specifically for drug paraphernalia and the CBD edibles. The state had come out with clarification that they're not allowed and we had informed and sent an email out to all of our places about CBD edibles. So they were, they were following up and helping us with our enforcement.
And one of the things, one of the things we found that we've never really seen before and we weren't very familiar with were whipits, which we found at Quick Mart. And those are, they're like used to, like, in like whipped cream, like machines, kind of. And, but people can misuse them to get high. So we found those at Quick Mart. And then we also found ZYN. One out of three of the stores had Velo, which are like nicotine pouches. And 11 of the 15 stores were selling mini jewels. And we also found a CBD syringe, which is pictured in the next slide. We found that at Quick Mart as well. And then, just to kind of go off of that, a few of our other past and present Youth Action Team projects. We did the Trusted Adult Campaign at the high school. We do biweekly Galvin and high school clubs. Last year, I was kind of the director of the Galvin Club, so I would go every Wednesday and kind of run that and plan out what the seventh and eighth graders were going to do and run like mini groups with them. They have like their bathroom buzz and stuff like that. We also run the Eighth Grade Leadership Summit every August. This summer, I was lucky enough to have my own kind of like session and I did a group with the kids. I would show symbols and the kids would move across the room, whether they thought it was a positive and negative or neutral symbol and kind of why they were standing where they were. And at the end, the whole kind of meeting was that there's more than just one opinion and in life, you're going to have to work together with people that you may not have the same opinion as. So kind of to just respect everyone's opinions and see things from multiple points of view. We also are working right now on the Sugary Sweetened Beverage Campaign. I'm actually directing that kind of too at the high school. We just had a group on that at our high school club meeting this week. And that's basically just going to kind of talk to everyone and say, "There's a lot more sugar in the drinks that you're drinking than you think" and to kind of promote drinking more water. And we also focus on mental health a lot. We did the NAN Project, which we had some people from them come and talk to us like two weeks ago and it was really nice to hear about that. And we also work with the MA Cultural Council Grant. And then every year, we present in ninth-grade health classes. We do presentations on vaping and mental health. Last year, we did kind of like a Family Feud type game with the ninth graders because I was a ninth grader. It's very hard to keep their focus for more than like 10 minutes. So we decided to make it kind of a game and make it fun. So we decided to make it kind of a game and make it fun for them. So we did like a Family Feud type game where they were asked questions about vaping and mental health and what's going on in the school and stuff like that. So it was a really good way to kind of reach them. And I think that's it.
Right, so I just want to highlight Cara's work with the Youth Action Team because we actually have over 100 youth in Wakefield right now currently engaged. We have 10 stipended leaders who meet every week with Cara to kind of plan out all these initiatives. Then we have an active Galvin team, that's about 40 youth, and then 40 youth involved at the high school level. So it's really exciting that there, not only we've got these youth making an impact, but then these youth having these positive experiences and gaining these leadership skills. So it's really impressive, so thank you Cara, thank you Claire. And then we have two advisors, one at the middle school and one at the high school faculty. So it's great. It's, I'm very proud of the work that they're doing, and they're making a big impact. Just a couple other highlights, I know a lot of you were at the Wake Up Annual Retreat or Meeting, so you, you're very familiar. Just a few highlights of what we've been able to accomplish this year, new projects. Having Tracy, our recovery coach in Wakefield, that's a collaboration between the Health Department and the Police Department, has been great. She's actually worked with 100 individuals in Wakefield already this year. So that's something that the Town Council has funded, and we really appreciate that. A number of those individuals, over 50%, she's worked with several hours. So she's, she's worked with a lot of people and doing a number of things, getting people on the road to recovery. So if you haven't met Tracy, I definitely recommend meeting her. She's got a very compelling story and is very caring, and the individuals do love her. She, I walk downtown with her, and she has a number of, number of fans and friends. And then another kind of a signature project, we actually just presented on this at the DA's office about our diversion program that we have in Wakefield. So it's through the Police Department, and then we've adapted a school version of the diversion program, which really is aimed at, we were noticing five or so years ago, we had a lot of our young 20-somethings really struggling in the community, and we said, we really need to get to them earlier. So when we see first signs in high school, maybe they're caught vaping THC in the bathroom or they're caught doing something else, come under the, come to school under the influence. This program really wraps more services around the young people. So I just can't emphasize enough the collaborations that happened in this community between the town, the Health Department, the schools, the Police Department, so many people working together to help, kind of help our, our young people and all people in this community. So thank you for your continued support. And those are just an example of the diversion contracts. You can see all the things that they are committed to doing.
So that's the Health Department in a nutshell, I'm sure we forgot some things because it's just a huge rep of subjects that we're dealing with. And again, it does change over time. It's kind of one of the things I like about public health, is that it's a continuing education. You know, H1N1 was a new thing, and radon at one point was a new thing. And, you know, next year, there'll be some other new thing. So it keeps us on our toes, it's a constant learning experience, which makes it really interesting. We have a fantastic staff, which is really the bottom line and board of why we're so successful. Do you have any questions?
First off, I just want to thank you Ruth and Catherine and Claire as well for your incredible commitment, this was fantastic. And in inviting you here this evening, and thank you everyone that's here this evening, because I know it's a team effort. And inviting you here, it was as much informational for us as the council, as it is for the community at large. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about vaping, and I think rightfully so, in recent weeks. But the Board of Health, the Health Department has such a wide reach, as you say, really from A to Z. And so being able to educate all of us on that and the community, I think is such an important piece to the outreach that we're always looking to have between what, the great work that's being done and the people in need of services. So any way that we can help and collaborate certainly is, is a welcome opportunity.
We really appreciate the opportunity to be able to get the information out to the public.
Any councils have any questions or comments or thoughts?
Counselor Chimes?
Thank you. First of all, let me just echo, amazing job. Claire, it was great to see you present on some of the youth activity that's out there. And really impressive that we've built this, this culture in the Wakefield Public Schools where, you know, you've got 100 kids, you know, between the high school and the Galvin that are working on this. I think that's amazing, and it's really a testament to the work that, you know, both the Board of Health and the professional staff do. I, I think, you know, just another observation is the variety of what you guys are working on. You know, talking about everything from sort of building safety to, you know, to violence, to drug abuse, to mental health, it really is incredible. And so thank you very much for the work that you do. Just had a couple of questions that I wanted to sort of get your thoughts on. One is just to understand sort of how you communicate the programs that you have out with the community. And are there opportunities where, you know, as a town, we can better support those efforts? Sort of one question I had. And the second question, just as you talk about some of the enforcement activities that you've done particularly around the great work with the convenience store checks. I'd also like to ask, is there any sort of best practices or other ways in which you try to work with, you know, convenience stores and other vendors in the community to, you know, try to promote what is a model store? What is sort of a model best practice for some of our retailers in the community?
Okay, so the first question about communicating, I think that is a historic struggle for, for public health departments because when everything's going really well, you don't see us. And it's only when something's going wrong that you do see the Health Department. So however, that being said, now that the town has a Communications Director, we've really been working closely with Jen. And we're working on, like, trying to have almost once a week, something go out. Whether, you know, we've had a lot of news lately, whether it's been on Triple E or vaping. But even when there's not a current issue, using the opportunity to get information out, whether it's like food safety at Thanksgiving or whatever. So we're really working to get more of the word out through some of the newer social media, not just the newspaper kinds of things. We also do presentations at some of the community groups, which I find really effective and fun and interesting. And then as far as model practices, we do a lot of education work with the retail stores, in particular, Maureen. So anytime a retail store opens or changes owners in Wakefield, they get two visits. They get a visit from Maureen, who not only gives them copies of the regulations, because they have to get permits for tobacco, but she walks through it all. She walks through the enforcement, she walks through what kind of products you can have because of the flavors you can't have, what's really a flavor, what's not a flavor, strategies for getting IDs or if there's a difficult situation. And then they also get an education visit from Coral, from the Health Department, and goes through basically, from soup to nuts, the kinds of things that they need to know for their food permit. So we try to start them off with, it's actually, it sounds really like common sense, and it is common sense, but it's not something Health Departments have traditionally done for food. We normally give them an application and say, fill it out, give us some money, here's your permit, and then they open, and then we find, you know, all these problems. So we actually learned about this at some national conferences where when they apply for the permit, we do a lot of education and a lot of meetings to determine, are they knowledgeable about food safety and all that before they open the doors? And they don't get a permit unless we're confident that they actually know what they're doing. And that really saves a lot of problems for both of us down the road, so.
That's great, no, I appreciate all the proactive work that you're putting in. And again, it shows the creativity and the forethought that you and your team have, so thank you.
Can I just throw one thing that I neglected to say? And Allison isn't here, but Allison Melman, who is on our board, is resigning from the board because she's moving out of Wakefield the end of this month. So I wanted to acknowledge, Allison is actually an attorney who works for the State Health Department. So she's been a fantastic resource for us, and we're really, really going to miss her. And I want to acknowledge all the work that she's done for the board and obviously let you know that there'll be a vacancy before the election. So I know that kicks in another whole process.
Now, I know you had mentioned 23 tobacco permits. Can you give us a sense of how that number compares with other comparably sized communities?
Sure, way, way higher, way, way higher. And I have no explanation. You know, obviously, I do Melrose and Wakefield, and on paper, the two communities are so similar. But in real life, there are some things that are just so different. And tobacco is one of them. Melrose has 12, we have 23. We had three vaping stores. Melrose has zero, so Redding has zero. So it, I don't know why. Two of the three vaping stores are, well, were out of business before the vaping ban. They had already gone out of business, actually, pretty recently. And then the third is now out of business, at least temporarily while the ban is on. So those are three permits that whoever goes into those sites next, if it's not a business with a tobacco permit, that tobacco permit is permanently retired. And we have one that's permanently retired because Rooster Tai sold cigarettes, and it's a pizza shop that's going into there now. So that's one that is off the books. Main Street Convenience is an empty storefront. So again, depending on what goes into there, that would be another one off the books, plus the three on Albion. So this regulation is actually having exactly the effect, you know, that we want. And it is another small convenience store that will probably be going out of business. So off the top, we're going to have five less fairly quickly.
And on the vaping piece, you mentioned the temporary statewide ban. Can you give the council a sense of what expectations you have, if any, relative to vaping availability?
After the four months?
After the four months?
Well, I have no idea, however, these are the two options. There, the associate, one of the vaping store associations already asked for an injunction, which I'm sure you saw on the news last Friday, and were turned down. I believe there's another case in two weeks. The governor was on very strong legal ground, not that I'm a lawyer, but on doing it. So we're not particularly worried about that. The purpose of the ban for four months is to give the scientists and the FDA time to try to figure out exactly why is this happening? Is it the substance? Is it the process? We don't really know. At the end of the four months, the State Health Department and the governor can reassess, and they can decide to continue the ban. They can withdraw the ban, they can modify the ban. And local boards of health can also pass their own local regulation if they want to continue the ban. So we're in a little bit of a holding pattern right now.
Counselor, bye.
So I, Ruth, I wanted to thank you and your team. Everyone does such amazing work, and Claire, the students just do great work. And your department has one that collaborates and just works so well throughout our entire town and, and does this for a living. So even when you're out at night, Maureen will tell you about our tobacco licenses, and Catherine will tell you about the program the students are doing. So I had two questions, one, you didn't mention flu shots. And as Laurel's students were the ones who gave me my flu shots last year at the farmer's market, I want, if there's an opportunity for you to talk about that. And, and two, you did talk about some of, so one of the things that we do here is the municipal budget, and a lot of your programs are through our budget. And then a lot are grant-funded, and you guys have done a great job getting grant-funded. And so I'm just making the offer that I've made to Chief and others, like, if we can help you, tell us how we can help you do your job better. The recovery coach is something we've already talked about. I know a couple of years ago, I mentioned a couple of other towns have full-time social workers, and is that something that would be? I see you shaking your head. I would love to talk about that as we start thinking about next year's fiscal budget. So any ideas you have, please know to come and tell us, and, and let's find a way to find funding for them.
Great, thank you. Did you have a question? Right, flu shots, sorry.
My students will be available a week from Thursday at the Town Hall.
So as I said, we do use interns a lot. And for the flu shots, for the nursing students, it's a win-win situation because it's the only time they really have an opportunity to give a whole bunch of immunizations all at once and really practice. And they do a great job, sorry, I shouldn't just say practice, they do a great job. I haven't memorized the schedule, so I can't tell you. I was going to say Karen.
October 17th, four to seven, at Town Hall.
Oh yeah, sorry, October 17th? Right, October 17th at Town Hall from four to seven.
And October 26th at the Healthy Living Expo.
Right, October 26th at the Healthy Living Expo, which is at the Americal.
And it's at the Galvin.
Oh, sorry, they moved it.
Yes, they moved it this year.
Sorry, they moved it, it's at the Galvin.
Ten to one.
Ten to one. We have high dose and regular vaccine, although I would encourage the public to go to one of those two because the manufacturers are actually sold out on vaccines, so we can't get more. Traditionally, even after our clinics, you can just stop by the office and get a flu shot. I don't think that will be happening this year, so definitely come to the clinics.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
I was just wondering, I know an annual or a bi-annual activity that you do is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and I was just wondering, what is the status of that? And is that going to be communicated?
Timely, timely comment, so yes. Last year, we now do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I'm going to say on a regional basis, but I mean, it's done just in our schools, but we're using the same survey instrument as the whole, as the Middlesex League, so that there's, we can compare and contrast a little bit better. And actually Catherine, today, today, Catherine, where are you? Catherine, just today, actually presented the results to high school staff. So, and I believe we're going to be scheduling also, because we usually come and do the presentation for the, for the Town Council too.
Thank you, I look forward to that.
Good timing.
Any other questions or comments?
Seeing none again, thank you for all the work that you do, and thank you everyone for coming tonight. And it truly is a team effort, and we recognize that. And we're incredibly fortunate to have all of you and the level of dedication and commitment that you do to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your support.
All right, now we're going to move on to item number seven, under Presentation and Action Items. And I would invite up Chief Scori to come before us.
Now you may recall back at the Council on the Common Meeting on September 9th, Chief Scori presented and gave us some updates relative to a number of issues downtown. One of the issues that came up from that meeting was the idea of the benches, and how the benches, based on their current configuration, may, may be impacting some of the concerns that some folks have raised within the community. Chief Scori has taken a good amount of time, he's worked with his department. I've been in communication with him since that meeting relative to this issue. He's worked with our Town Administrator Mayo as well. And I'll now turn the floor over to Chief Scori to give us an update in terms of where we stand relative to this initiative of rethinking some bench placement.
Thank you. So as I stated at the previous meeting I was at, I was looking for some relief with the benches. The benches have become a focal point for some groups to gather, and as a result of that, we've had some issues. I don't know the exact date that the benches went in, but in the beginning of August, I started to track the number of calls that we had that were associated with the benches. And since then, we've had 19 calls somehow related to the benches, of people gathering on the benches. To just give you an idea of what some of those calls are, some are alcohol-related disturbances between people, there's been a fight or two, there've been some medical issues. And as a result of those calls, we've had eight arrests, or people either arrested or taken into protective custody. So if we were to go back to when those benches were originally installed, I couldn't tell you what the number is, it would be incredibly time-consuming to do that. But I think 19 calls in a relatively short period of time is, it's quite a few. So I think what the problem is, is the way the benches are currently configured, they invite groups to gather. So we looked at rearranging the benches. And I went out downtown the other day, and I marked down all the locations of where the benches currently are, and taking into consideration the fact that I know that there was fundraising that went on, and that there were merchants and companies and businesses that donated money for these benches. And I figured that they're in the locations that they're in because of that reason. So what I would recommend is simply removing one bench from each pair. There's 10 pairs of bench- of benches downtown. Remove one bench from each pair, take the remaining bench, and face it inwards towards the stores. And then find new locations for the ten benches that have been removed. So I prepared a map. I think everybody got it. And in yellow, I marked where the benches are currently located. And then all I did was make some suggestions on where I think we could place the ten benches that are being moved. Doesn't mean that they have to go there. It was just when I was looking at the downtown area, I thought if we spread these benches out, there were some new locations where they could possibly go. And then we had a few left over, which is where I came up with the recommendation of the dog park, maybe JJ Round and Mapleway. And that was simply a suggestion. So a few of the new locations I, I looked at were maybe putting one in front of Zuzu's Cafe, another one in front of Artichokes. And then moving further down Main Street, there's an empty storefront between the block of Princess Street and Lincoln Street, and I thought we could put a bench there. Maybe another one across the street in front of a shop called Aria. And then moving further down Main Street, past Water, maybe a bench in front of the Dollhouse Hair Salon, and maybe one in front of CVS. Of course, those are just simply suggestions, recommendations. But I think if we were to reconfigure the benches, separate them as being pairs, they'd be less inviting for certain groups to gather.
Thank you, Chief. So I think it's important to point out that we're not talking about removing these benches. We're, this is a matter of reconfiguring placement.
Simply reconfiguring.
Does anyone have any initial questions for Chief Scori?
On the placement?
Ms. Santos.
Chief, did you think of, or this would be up to town administrator, is Town Hall, is there a bench that's down by Town Hall, or is that?
There's no bench there now. That would be a great spot.
I mean, that's a nice spot. And it's, you could take then one from thinking of JJ, or, you know.
Can I make one suggestion relative to that? I know there was a discussion earlier about the district, the downtown district. And the Envision Wakefield Project envisions the district, quote unquote, meaning from Church Street, from the lake, all the way to the junction. So I think if we think about it in those parameters, that's how we're approaching our downtown district. That, I think that's one consideration for us. Another would be, I know the, the bench committee spent a lot of time looking at benches and being concerned about uniformity and the like. And the dog park, I know, already has a couple benches in there. So this would be a different type of bench that would go in there. So I don't know if there's any consensus of maybe thinking more towards Town Hall as compared with in the dog park, as to not disturb that. And I think it also keeps it more in, in the connector district, I'll call it, from Church Street to closer to Artichokes or the library, basically. Counselor DiNaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna give you my opinion, and I'm gonna go back to 2017 when the benches were approved. So six members of this board gave an affirmative to the locations of all the benches back in seventeen. That's the only way that the patr- patronicity plan would've went through. There wasn't any objection then to the placement with the then-chief as to the location and the possibility of what was going on. That's the first thing. This board had to approve location of all the benches.
So we didn't approve location?
The map was submitted in order for it to go through patronicity, so it was approved. Patronicity would've never done it.
One person at a time, please. We have to be recognized. Paul, finish your point. Counselor Butt will be next.
So, so right now, twelve of these benches were paid for by private citizens, under the assumption that they were going to be located in certain locations. The class of sixty-six wanted one in memory of a passing classmate. They wanted to be in front of the library. The library bought two. So to move one of theirs outside that area wouldn't be right. J. Penet bought another one. WCAT bought another. The Rotary bought another. The Labor, the Light, I mean, Savings Bank bought another one. So when they purchased them, they picked their locations, and then we set them in place. And the only way, again, and we have the documentation, if we have to go back and look at it, for them to go through with the patronicity, it had to have an approved plan approved by this board in order to move forward. So, and we have that documented, document on file. It's, it could be easily accessible. So.
Thank you, Counselor DiNaco. So Counselor Butt?
You can go ahead, Dan. Are you sure?
Yeah.
So my memory is completely different than Paul's. I, I recalled us actually having a conversation, and was Brian Falvey on the board at that time?
Yes.
Right. And Brian was very, I remember him being very clear that benches were given to the town, and if the town needed to move them, or where they put them, it was in the town's purview to do that. I remember approving the benches, but not the placements. Now, someone might have requested a placement that could have been honored, but my memory was not absolutely, we did not vote on the placement of the benches. And I don't know that we're harming anyone's idea of where the benches go if a class of nineteen sixty-six bench was placed also in front of the library, or maybe one of the library benches goes on the corner, not on Main Street, but right on the corner there, and more towards the post office. But my memory, and I remember Brian being very firm, that it was up to the town, once the benches were voted on, to see the best placement for those. I don't know if, town administrator, Mayo, being quiet over there, do you have a memory?
Actually, just before that, Counselor Butt, did you have a further comment on that first?
Sure. Just, just to respond my memory, because it was one of my first meetings, and I believe, if you go and look at it, my understanding is we accepted the gift. This is what we do. We accept the gift. And the placement, which we did not debate, is a decision for the town administrator, the director of DPW, working with the folks that give the gift. I actually think us voting on placement is not what we did then, and it's not what we should be doing now. I appreciate hearing some suggestions, and then I'd leave it to the folks who are responsible for the operation of placement of benches. It's actually not something that I think needs to come in front of us. We accepted the gift. We can tell you how we feel about whether they should be moved, or people, I really appreciated Main Street coming and saying that there was an understanding of specific location. I think town administrator, Mayo, Chief Scori, DPW director can work with Main Street to honor that. Because the understanding was Main Street, not the envisioned definition that came about a year later. It was the traditional, JJ Rounds is not included in the definition of Main Street. And I would hope, you know, carrying on that, to me, is, is look at Main Street as the definition created then. But I think reconfiguring, that's under your preview. That's, that's my opinion.
Town administrator, Mayo?
I, I think that actually, I'm gonna say everybody's right.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think that they are gifts, and as any gift, the town has the right to move them, change them as they see fit, or use the gift for a while and say, we don't want it anymore. Things like that could happen. I think there were locations that were contemplated at the time. Those have changed over time. There were, there were, there were locations that were contemplated on that original map that never occurred because some business owners didn't want them there. There were others that we have moved already that were on that original map. There were some that couldn't be placed because of utilities and what have you. So I think it was a framework to look at. I think that, I do agree, I think that the council should be very much aware that these, that changes are happening. I think we can certainly find spaces within the downtown area from the Town Hall all the way to the Galvin for these, for these benches. So I think that that shouldn't be an issue. But I, what I would do respectfully is I think before I moved a bench in front of a business, I would talk to the business ahead of time to make sure that they were aware, so then you're not back here at the next meeting saying, why did this business go there? Why does bench go there? But there are a lot of things to take into consideration, with the sidewalk, utilities, what have you. But I think it is key, I do completely agree with the, with the chief, that unfortunately, it's very inviting right now, and it's too bad for some of the more boisterous behavior. And I think that's maybe something we make some changes that might help out in that area.
And I think going back to that time in 2017, we had tried to anticipate some issues. Some people had raised concern about, for example, the length of the benches. And some people had talked about putting dividers in because there was concern at that point that people may be, may be sleeping on the benches, you might remember. I don't think we anticipated back in 2017 that people would be congregating for extended periods and then causing the police to often be involved. That wasn't, to my recall, factored into the equation at the time. The idea of the town, these are town gifts, and the idea that we can respect placement as, as, as much as practicable makes sense, but ultimately, we, as a body, need to do what's best for the town. And if we're finding that the bench placement or configuration is not currently working, we have a responsibility to try to remedy this. And if we can remedy this without having to, for example, remove all the benches at this point in time, then I think this, we need to do that. Because it very well may be the case that some of the new locations aren't working. And, you know, I've, I've been speaking with the DPW director, with, with the chief, with the town administrator on this issue. And these, you know, we're talking about, what, eight bolts into, into the ground. So we may have to try a few different locations. Some of them might work, some of them may not. But ultimately, I think that if we know that there's an issue, the police department, and within their court competencies, has identified one means to perhaps mitigate this issue. So not going forward with, with trying out the reconfiguration, I think is really doing a disservice and, and not fulfilling our responsibilities to the town. Counselor DiNaco.
I'm not opposed to the reconfiguration of the benches. So let's just be clear on that, okay? As far as my opinion is concerned. As far as placement, I'll submit the document that you voted on, or this board voted on. That's the placement that we voted on. Because I was the president of the board at that time. I know what I presented to the board. This is the placement. Now, regardless of all that at this time, okay, what was said, what wasn't said, what is the current position of the board, and they have the right to move things, that's great. I, I don't care. I don't think any of the benches that were to be set up in the downtown area by someone that the town wants to collaborate with, okay, and make, because that was what our whole point and mission was early on, that we wanted to form a stronger bond with organizations. To now say, okay, we don't care. Who owns the benches down at the bus stops? Do we own those, or do the T. own those? Do we know?
That's been a question I haven't been able to get an answer to.
If the T. owns them, you can't touch them.
Yeah, we're not contemplating looking at those.
Yes, eh?
I mentioned, I mentioned there are two sets of benches.
That's right. Because they face one another.
Smith Street lot, right.
So those benches more.
We'll get you that answer on that one.
But those, if you move those, those benches are more in line with what the town buys. If you're going to move any benches that you want to put there, put the green ones in there, and find a happier home for the wooden ones. Does that make sense?
Are we talking about changing the configuration?
Yeah. I said I don't oppose the configuration. But there was twenty benches that were supposed to be in the downtown. You wanna spread them out? And there's already benches in front of Aria that are facing one another.
Are you sure?
Yeah. I sit in there all the time.
I don't think there is.
No.
Yeah, because, well, then, right.
No.
There are two by Cravings, not by Aria.
No, there's two down by, yeah, Cravings. I, I mean, I sit in there when I'm waiting for public kitchen.
I understand back in 2017, when this plan was made.
Yep.
And it was done with all good intentions.
Oh, yeah.
But nobody knew what the effect would be. And the effect hasn't worked out. And I equate this to my experience with the Traffic Advisory Committee. We've made plenty of changes to traffic patterns, intersections, and they don't always work out. And we have to go back to the drawing board and see what will work best. And it's the same thing. It just didn't work out with the effect that everybody wanted. And I think now it's time for change. We have to try something different.
Are you facing them in, or are you facing them out?
Facing them in.
I think we should also be clear that we're not disregarding, Paul, what was decided in 2017. This is an evolving process, and we're seeing what's working, what's not, to the chief's point. And in this instance, the way that the configurations are just not working. And so we have to try to, and I think we're, we're reaching a good middle ground in that trying to preserve one bench into the locations, and then taking the other bench, and trying to keep it within the proximity of, of, of our downtown Main Street. You know, we're not moving these to North Ave. You know, we're not moving these to the head of the lake. We're keeping them in, in the vicinity of, of, of where the intention was, certainly. But otherwise, we're, we're not dealing with an issue that exists here today that presents itself before us. And part of our problem solving is to have to be adaptable when these issues come up, I think. Further comments or thoughts, questions? So.
Julie.
Sorry.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
So I wasn't here in 2017. I went back and, and watched it. And I, and I think, I hear consistently with what I, what I heard there. I guess my only concern is, I don't know whether we need to vote, this may be something for the motion, whether we need to vote on the actual locations, or simply leave it to our town administrator, DPW. Likely the police were not even consulted back in 2017, so obviously, that's an important consultation that has to happen now, and perhaps Main Street's as well. But, but from watching the, the debate at that time, it, it was clear to me that they, the benches were to be in kind of the core, what I would call the core of the downtown. I mean, they specifically noted Sabatino's to Lincoln Street, whether it can expand beyond there, or down Albion Street, or where we've gotten kind of a broader definition of downtown, perhaps. But it may be something that we wanna, I understand they gave us a gift. We don't always have to consult on what we do with that gift, but it might be a nice gesture to, so talk with them about what footprint might be workable.
I did look at Albion Street for new placement, and I just don't think the sidewalk is wide, and if that was.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't think it would either.
So I, I would, I would suggest, we can entertain the motion, that we would agree to the reconfiguration of the benches, not to site-specific, but instead just reaffirming that the police, in conjunction with DPW and the town administrator's office, be able to determine viable alternate locations, and then place them accordingly, and move them as necessary, as they determine appropriate. Counselor Chines?
So, Mr. Chair, to that end, I would move that we direct the town administrator in consultation with the, the police chief, the DPW director, you know, to explore and implement reconfiguration of the, of the benches, you know, with the, with the caveat that we'd ask that you look at the original intent of the donations and try to act in a way that's as consistent as possible with that original intent.
That being a, a motion?
Seconded.
Yes, motion. All right. A motion, a motion by Counselor. Chines has seconded by Counselor, but discussion. Counselor May.
Right. So I was there back in 2017, too. And Steve was right. I think it was a combination of both. Pardon my voice. In conjunction to that, town administrator, DPW, and police, I'd like to add, even though, even at advisory level, I understand the town gets the gift, we do what we want. But as Julie said, keeping it within reason, couldn't we have an advisory person like Bob, who was here, involved? Not to dictate, but to be a part of that conversation.
Are you suggesting?
Configurations needed. We know that. But I'd like to see Main Street involved.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd say that, that's, I'm comfortable with that as part of the motion.
Right.
Yeah.
Julie, good point. So that's it for me.
So, Mr. Mayo, then you would also be sure to consult with Main Street and get their feedback as well.
And I would also bring in the chamber. I would've brought them in anyway.
Right. You would do that regardless.
Want to get everybody, yeah.
Yeah.
The original parties, right.
Okay. Good, thanks.
So we have a motion and a second relative to this issue. Further discussion? All right, seeing none then. So the motion before you then is for the town administrator to work with the Department of Public Works and the police department relative to placement or reconfiguration of the benches in, in the downtown area, with the expectation or objective of trying to preserve as, as much as possible the, the original intention of placement from 2017, and to consult with Main Street's and the Chamber of Commerce for their input. That is the motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? If I vote a seven to zero, the motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Actually, if you could hang tight just for a moment. So next item, item seven B is a report of enhanced parking enforcement. I'll ask Mr. Mayo to provide some of the information. I should also remind everyone watching, too, that all of this information in our packets is available on our town website. If you go to the town council section of the website, you have the, the agendas and, and the packets with all the materials are there, so you can follow along or go back and look at them. But with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Mayo. So you can follow along or go back and look at them. But with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Mayo.
Uh, great. On, on parking enforcement, and as I think you can tell, not everybody's happy with parking enforcement, but we're trying. As you are aware, you know, we, this has been going on for a little bit over two months. And in your packet is some information regarding the months of August and September, which is I think when you would find tickets that had been issued and had been paid. July for tickets issued is a very strange month because you have the Fourth of July in there and you have a lot of tickets that are issued all over town for all over reasons. And that really wasn't what this was all about. As the chair did state, we did change, or the council did change parking throughout the town for most areas to be two hours from one hour. And we also designated certain areas for four hour or merchant parking. And merchants could park there more than four hours, but the four hour was for patrons that came in, maybe took a little bit longer. Parking is eight through six, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM. What we have found from a number standpoint as the, and we did have two parking attendants hired. And we found that there was a dramatic increase in the number of tickets issued by well over two hundred percent. So in two thousand nineteen, and in August and September, we issued two hundred and seventy-nine parking tickets. And in August and September two thousand nineteen, eight hundred and fifty-five, a big increase. And I think I also included in your package where those tickets were. And right in the downtown, we were talking about hundred and forty-seven on Main Street alone one month, forty-some odd on Albion Street of our downtown. So, so that was encouraging. And I will say that whenever you're changing behavior, it is with fits and starts. People are not happy about being, having their behavior changed, but I, I think people are adapting. And what you are seeing downtown is that there are spaces open for patrons. And even the businesses in our downtown, and I'll, I'll hit Greenwood separately. Even our businesses in the downtown who don't like the fact that they can't park in front of their business all day or they and their employees can't, many of them have come to me and said, you know something, we have to admit there are now a lot more spaces for our patrons. Which I thought was very telling by some of them to come in and actually admit that. There's nothing I like talking more about than parking, as I tell them. And I think I've met with about every one of them that has requested. A comment that came during this process when we added this to the budget was, added these positions, how this would affect the budget. And I think for the first two months of this experiment, we can certainly count on about nine thousand dollars in extra revenue directly attributed to parking enforcement and/or people purchasing stickers so they could, they could, they could park for longer periods of time. Now that money, that, that revenue will not be there every month because people's behavior is changing. But this was never all about money. And it was never about breaking even, although we are breaking even a little bit better actually right now. This was about changing behavior and helping the businesses downtown. So for me, that has been a great success. What we have seen in some areas though is, is when you do create this enforcement in the downtown area, we do see people, uh, we do see, seeing it pushing out to the, to, to outside of the Main Street, outside of your main areas. And one area we are having issues is that as people get further and further away, they, they'll take advantage of maybe streets that they don't think will be looked at. When you get off of Main Street for a few blocks in either direction, whether it's downtown or in the Greenwood area. That's something that we've been working very closely with, with Traffic Advisory. The chief and I talk and we're having a meeting November first.
November first.
Again, to talk about some of these areas where it's pushed out. And that'd be a meeting where we may want to have some, may suggest come back to the council with, you know what? We need some more merchant spots. We need some additional longer spaces. One of the businesses came in and said, which was really great, they said, you know something, our business does take a little bit longer sometimes. We'd like some longer spa, spa, spots. And I spoke to them about that and they said, no, not merchant spots. Our merchants can, our people can walk, but something more in the downtown that maybe is a four hour space for people that need a little bit longer time. I thought that was very great of, good of that merchant coming in and not just looking for his own spot, but looking for other people. So I think we will be talking about that and bringing that back to the board as we go along. As far as the enforcement is, is concerned, that's a tough job. I mean, there are people that are not happy that they're getting ticketed. I get that. There are, there are a lot of people that do not want to walk more than a couple of blocks to their business. I get that we're changing behavior. So that is somewhat difficult. I think that the parking attendants have had, have done a good job. It's, it's a big change. It's something new. We have more signage to get up as, as much as we direct people and, and say where they can park. There is still some miscommunication out there. I think, you know, either we're not being clear enough, we're, we're trying to make our message crisper. People also hear what they want to hear. And so that's the other part of it there. It is amazing to me that people that will continue to find the cheapest spot to park all day and they will risk getting a twenty-five dollar ticket when they could pay three dollars down at the train station and park there. Have, have had a lot of comments about that, a lot of questions about that too. So we're going to be looking at all of those issues. I think overall, this has been a very successful. I thank the chief for taking the calls. I thank myself for taking the calls. I thank Sherry for meeting with most of those people that come in when I'm there or when I'm not. And it, it is, most of the people are pretty reasonable when, when you get and talk to them. I think that we have, we have the philosophy that everyone gets one mulligan, you know? That, hey, they didn't know. If they're coming in and they're buying a sticker, we'll give them, you know, yes, okay, we'll talk to the parking clerk, we'll take care of that. But a lot of these come in again and again and again and they're doing the same thing. And, and so that is, is an issue. We do have two parking attendants right now. One has given their notice. We have already advertised and we have at least four applicants that have put their name in. So we want to keep that going. So I think it's been a success and I think the way that I tell it's a success, drive down Main Street at noon, you can get a parking space on Saturday, Friday, Thursday, there's spaces in the, in the lot. So the, and the businesses have come to me. They get it. They're starting to get it. And that'll answer any questions on my favorite subject.
Counselor Donaco. I'm going to go first. So, so when we initiated the parking change, we had multiple changes approved. One was going from the one hour to the two hour. So that was townwide. Some of the streets are in Dakota Wakefield, some of them aren't in Dakota Wakefield. But we still enforce two hour parking everywhere, correct?
Only if it's posted.
Right.
And if it's not posted, what is it?
There's no time limit.
No time limit.
Correct.
So without a sign, there's no time limit. If it's posted, it's two hours. Did we do away with all the one hours and make them two or there's still one?
The DPW is still in the process of swapping out times.
But ultimately, there will be no more one hour parking.
Correct.
Okay. So the issue that I'm hearing through my constituents is, what is the difference between four hour parking and merchant parking? I think that is a big issue because four hour parking is for the customer that could be there for four hours.
Right. If you do not have a merchant sticker.
That's correct. It becomes an all day parking if it's a merchant location.
And you are in an area that is marked merchant or four hour parking.
That's correct.
If you do not have a merchant sticker, you are at a four hour limit.
So the two areas in question right now, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, if you have a merchant sticker that is expired.
Yes.
You are also at a four hour limit.
I'm guessing you know things.
Yes, I know a few things.
We know a few things.
If you have a merchant sticker, you can be there from eight to six or longer. There is no time limit for you.
So the two areas where the largest grouping of parking is available is, one area is still unmarked and that's behind Brightview. That's not marked, that's not marked of as of yet.
No.
Okay. And the other one right now, the electric company is done with the digging of the area. It's just not open to the cars yet, correct?
Uh, it, it, you talked about-
On Water Street.
The Omelette, right. That is open.
That's open. So right now, but I don't think people realize that it is open because the orange barrels are still there and they're a little hesitant to go inside. Is that marked or are we going to leave it unmarked inside that lot?
You mean lined?
I'm, I'm talking about restrictions. Are we going to post any type of signage?
Four hour.
Yeah. We have actually, we, and I'll tell you, we've actually kind of said, that's not a bad spot to go for some of people in the spillover. So we are kind of letting that work there for longer term parking.
Correct, but are they, do they need any type of permit to be in there without being tagged? Are we just telling the enforcement officer not to go there?
There's actually DPW, we, we spoke with DPW about large signage.
Large signage there and figure out a way to line those spaces.
Yes.
So those two.
And there's no talk about-
It's a good, it's a good place to park.
And there's no talk about going deeper, correct?
We've gone pretty deep if you look down there right now.
Okay.
We've cleaned out all the trees. We've, we've put down our reclaimed road material that we'd have had to pay to get rid of.
Right.
To smooth that out a little bit. They're, they've kind of rolled that. Are we trying to figure out how we can do some sort of lines in there that won't be gone after the next rainstorm? So that's kind of what we're looking at to make that easier.
Okay, I'll wait for-
It's a good spot for people to go.
I'll wait for Greenwood after you get to Greenwood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why don't we, let's move on to Greenwood then.
Okay, Greenwood. Greenwood, we kind of looked at Greenwood a little bit later on in the process. There are, is more signage to get up. There are some areas that are a little bit of a walk. I really don't think so. There are as far as the ones are that are downtown, when you go downtown there. And if you look across from the train station, the train parking spaces on that area where there's rocks on Main Street, that signage, council voted on that. I think a couple of meetings ago to change that. That is a good spot for merchant or four hour parking. I think that's a great spot. Our problems in Greenwood are more of the commuters still pushing out further and further into the neighborhoods. So there will be a concerted effort to look at that areas, particularly when the signage goes up, changing that. So particularly where there, there are probably twenty or twenty-five, maybe more spaces a day that are still available at the train station for three dollars a day. Up towards Merriam, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Now what's the street that runs parallel to Main from Merriam to Far, Far? That is, yeah, we've seen overflow part of that.
Curves, curves?
Is it Merriam?
Yeah, it is. Curves, yeah.
Merriam Street.
Is it Merriam? So, so are we seeing an additional amount of cars on Merriam avoiding the-
Not, not, we, we have in the past, but not lately.
Okay.
Don't give anybody ideas. We will tomorrow morning now.
I'm just asking a question. Where, where are the overflow parking, do you know?
A lot of them are pushing out up Oak Street and in that area down there. But I will say in Greenwood as well, driving down there as I do, you know, at least a few times a week, there is, again, I see more parking for patrons than there was before.
And we're still waiting for the signage on the Melrose Wakefield Health side heading north, correct? That signage isn't there yet?
Yeah, the change of the signage there, yes, I mentioned that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also heading south and just going towards the Melrose, just beyond the, the business district in front of Greenwood School and, and across the street from there, there's a lot of availability throughout the day, a, a lot. And I mean, we're talking, it's probably a block from Greenwood Plaza.
Correct.
Just about. And there is, there are plenty of openings there now, the idea of, of what we can do there to, to improve that as well.
I will say that it's come, our, our incidence of, has come down in our office of people coming in with, so people are starting to acclimate to the new reality.
And we're getting a lot of positive feedback. There are a lot of, again, a lot of it's from merchants that are saying that, you know, this is, Steve, you, you hear more of the stories than anyone, but some of them are saying it's-
I think Sherry gets a little more than I do, but maybe between the two of us, we get all of them, I think.
This is how it's just been transformative for their own businesses in terms of being able to have available spaces. So there's a lot of positive on that.
I mean, I, I really compliment the council for taking this on. This has been a long time issue and really staying the course and moving this forward and kind of coming together and making some changes. This has made a difference to the businesses down there.
How far out are we on the handhelds?
Not very, I think.
So, I was in contact with the company on those devices back in early August. And I assumed it would be a quick and painless process. I was wrong.
We all, sorry.
So I received an email yesterday saying it was still about three to four weeks out. I have the ticket rolls that go on the devices. I just don't have the devices, right.
And what community has those right now? You mentioned-
Malden.
So you said that you're going to try to have the-
The plan is to send our two parking attendants over to Malden to spend a few hours with one of their attendants just to get a good hands-on feel for how they work. We've never used them before. Nobody in our department has any experience with them. So we figured we'd send them over there and let them see it from somebody who's been using it for a while.
Great idea.
We should point out too, that they're an extension of the existing systems we have in place too.
Right.
Correct.
For the, the payment system, so that was-
Compulsed, right.
Right, so it was meant to integrate with what's currently existing versus starting anew, so.
And, and we can add into the handheld device, you have a permit. Boom. You've got a merchant permit, you've got a residential permit. So that will really be helpful.
So the devices are capable of either scanning a license plate or an inspection sticker. Once it does that and it recognizes that vehicle identification, it will tell the parking attendant whether there's an issued permit or not for that vehicle.
Great, thank you. Counselor Button.
Thank you, Chief, for that update. I just, um, so as someone that lives in Greenwood, I'm, I'm looking forward to the November first meeting when you kind of think about that. And something to think about next year. So I live right across from the sign company and all six of their trucks are parked almost every day out front. And I wonder if there's a way to think about registration. It's different, my personal car versus my business car. They take up six merchant spots almost every day when I leave my house at seven o'clock. And they're big trucks. They're not, you know, sedans. And I think, think about that, that if it's a company, if it's a business thing where they have a parking lot, but they're using those merchant things, I just, I, I would almost treat that differently. I, you know, next year as we'd come up with stuff, think about two tiers. Because I think that's different than me working at a hair salon and having a sedan and being a person there. So I, I think we just do merchant and we don't say if it's a business vehicle. And I, I think just, especially when they're pretty massive trucks and they're, they're all day. So something to think about as we prepare for next year.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Chines.
Thank you. First of all, just, I, I mean, you know, when I've kind of driven downtown, you know, I've sort of observed in a very non-scientific way the availability of spaces, which is great because I, I think that was, and still remains a big concern for people as we talk about envision and other things. And so the fact that there is availability and that we're seeing some of that parking turnover that we intended is, is terrific. I am a little bit concerned about sort of the, the run rate in terms of the, the cost of the program and sort of relative to the collections. When I served on the finance committee, we talked, not about this making money, but we did talk about an expectation that would, this would break even, which while we are breaking even if you continue the run rate that we've seen through the first two months of the program, given the expectation that sort of the number of tickets that we collect will go down as, as people start to become more compliant. You know, I am concerned that it, it, it won't be break even, you know, as we approach the end of the fiscal year. And so, you know, it's something that I, I hope we continue to monitor as a council. And as we think about budget for fiscal twenty-one, you know, I'd encourage us to think about if there are ways where, you know, we can kind of save some money in the program so that we're matching revenue to expense a little bit more directly. I think that's something we should look at. But otherwise, again, I, I think, you know, it's having the desired effect in terms of the impact on parking, which is terrific. It sounds like we're losing one of the parking enforcement officers, but I know the other one has been really diligent about being out there and had the chance to talk to her at some point a couple of weeks ago. And so appreciate their work as well, doing a job that's pretty miserable and thankless in a lot of cases.
Well, I'll say at this point, we, we don't know if it'll be cost neutral. We, we have to wait and see. I mean, that's something, we're only, only two months into the program. I should point out, you had mentioned July, Steve. It went into effect July one, but the first several weeks were warnings. If you were getting, so we didn't actually get your tickets.
That's why I didn't even include July.
Yeah, so it's, it's not really a good representation. But I think the other aspect to this that we need to think about is, if we're solving a parking issue, there's value in that. And we can't lose sight of the fact that if we have spaces that we've all acknowledged are now available that weren't previously there, there's a, there's a, a real benefit to that that I don't think we can assign a, a dollar value to. But we're talking about creating new parking, building parking garages, all the things that have talked, been talked about over the years. It's just how do we address parking? If this is a way to address parking and if it ends up costing two thousand dollars a year to do it, then I think it's money well spent. So I think we, we, I think we're, it's premature for us at this point to do anything more than let it play out. And I know that in speaking with the chief previously, enforcement needs to be ongoing in order for it to be effective. If, it, it's just the reality of it because as much as behavior has changed, behavior has also changed back. And so that's, that's one of the things we have, we have to be mindful of as well, but you, we'll, we'll- Um, and so that's, that's one of the things we have, we have to be mindful of as well, but, you know, um, we'll, we'll see where the numbers come, Chief.
I just wanted to give credit to the two parking attendants. We started a program we never had before, and the most difficult thing you can do in this world is change human behavior. The first month, July, was a, was an educational period, they gave out warnings. That is not an easy job, being a parking attendant, it is unforgiving. People are cruel, say horrible things, Steve, I get, I get the feedback every day. Um, we heard a story earlier, there's two sides to every story, it's an unforgiving job, I have to give them a lot of credit. They were people who, they were not parking attendants in a previous life, they came from other professions, they're retired, they thought, hey, this is a great part-time job. I warned them what they were walking into, and they, they, they took it on, and I have to give them all the credit. They are the two people that have created this change, they deserve the credit.
Thank you, Chief. If we could move on to item seven C, the emergency fund updates, uh, Mr. Mayo, are you able to provide that to us as well?
Sure. Um, how's the memory?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry, Chief, thank you. Just to clarify, there was another piece that I thought he was going to be taking part in, that's why I didn't think he was gone, but it's, it's fine, we're, we're fine without it, no, we're okay.
Uh, the emergency fund, um, I want, I want to thank, again, this was presented, brought to me by the council, and, um, we actually, uh, worked with one of our new, um, uh, commercial, uh, citizens in town to have a fundraiser. And we did this in September of two thousand and eighteen, or October two thousand and eighteen, and we established an emergency fund. And this was for people, uh, Wakefield residents, um, up to one thousand dollars, um, uh, would be given or donated to an issue that you may have. No resident got the money on their own, so no, you didn't walk out with the, with the money. We'd pay your rent, we'd pay for your oil bill, or what have you, want to make sure that there was, you know, that, that, that was there. Um, I will say to, to date, um, uh, three people have applied and have been given assistance, um, monetary assistance. They were, uh, all by referrals, uh, to my office. And, um, uh, one of them actually just contacted me today looking for some help in another, in another area, in getting some grants and what have you. In each case, we did work with the person to try to find out, could we help them in the long term? Paying someone's oil bill is great for the month, right, but it doesn't solve their problems going forward. Paying someone's rent is great, um, but doesn't solve all those problems, is there a housing program we can go with? Is there some more long-term help that we can get to? We do have people that work at our, our senior center that do have some, uh, social work experience as a social worker and helps them out. Um, there are other grants, long-term grants that we help them, I've written a lot of, a number of letters to people to help them. Um, is there better housing that you can get? You can apply for, you know, first-time homebuyer housing, people didn't think they could, and, and they, and they, and they can't, so. Um, in that regard, it's been, um, very, um, uh, rewarding. I would like to, I'd hate to, I hate to say, I don't want to sound this the wrong way, I'd like to have more people come in and take advantage of this. Not that I want to see more people that need it, but we would like more people coming to take advantage of it. Um, people that come in are very private, um, they have been assured, um, by me that none of their names are made public and none of them will be made public. We have one-on-one, uh, we have face-to-face meetings, we go over the application together, uh, because I really want to understand what we can do to help them. Um, and they're lovely people and they are, um, again, very private and, uh, I feel that that's been a good way to do it. Um, it is on the website, it's on my, my page, that there, it talks about the program a little bit, the application is not there. I would prefer not to have the application on the website, I want them to come in and fill that out with me, or get it and bring it back. Um, we can certainly discuss that, uh, but I think to have something filled out and then, um, you know, going through the system, is it email? Is someone else going to see it and all, all things like that, and that, that's what people have told me, they're very, very proud. We have, um, nine thousand dollars in the, in the, um, uh, account right now, I think that we should think about, um, we, we, um, work and we sponsor and we, we work with a lot of different, um, uh, places in town to do fundraisers with them, and we go to them and what have you. We might want to consider doing something for this in the future to beef this up. But I think it's been a, um, it's been very rewarding, um, personally, uh, the people are very grateful and very private. And I will say that working with their vendors has been a much better experience than I thought it would be. And their vendors, whether it's their landlords or the oil company, have actually even come down a little bit. And, and so there's been a little bit of help there. So I answer any questions on that, but, um, that's where we are right now.
Any questions for Mr. Mayo? Vice Chair Santos?
Comments, I think, you know, we envision this for people going through extraordinary circumstances, um, for a one-time assistance and, um, having some knowledge of, of someone who received some of this, I know they were so unbelievably grateful, especially with how Steve treated them, in not simply assisting in an extraordinary situation, um, but to then help to see what else could be done to help a family get on their feet. And I just, you know, I think it's something that, again, happens behind closed doors, the curtains drawn, and I, you know, just want people to understand how respectful Town Administrator Sherry, I'm sure, is when dealing with people in, in crisis and in difficult situations, and to help them, but then go beyond that. So I thank you and thank you both for that work.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Chines?
Just a, a question on, on communication, Steve, you mentioned sort of the website. Um, have we sent anything out in like, you know, tax bills or utility bills talking about either the availability of the program? Or also if there's an opportunity for people to, uh, donate to the programs that we do have funds available?
We have not, and that's something we need to work on.
Great. Uh, but I, I would say to the extent that we could have that communication happen in both directions, I mean, it would be great to see more people apply. I'm sure there are more people than three in Wakefield that have a need, but, you know, we also want to make sure as people apply, we still have funds available for them.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for that. All right, moving on to item number nine, constituent issues, this is the opportunity for counselors to provide, um, us brief, with brief reports of any issues raised by constituents that are not included currently on the agenda, and, um, no votes will be taken at this time, but items may be included on, on a future agenda. Do we have any constituent issues this evening? Counselor Chines?
One quick thing that I actually hope we can maybe ask the Traffic Advisory Committee to take a look at. Um, uh, an individual in town had sent, I think most of us on the council, uh, an article from the Globe about sort of the effect of, I kind of think of it as the Waze effect, um, you know, of people cutting through towns and sort of routes that aren't used to traffic because of, you know, Waze or Google Maps or other apps that will, will try to take you away from more heavily trafficked routes. The article talked about, you know, some strategies that cities and towns are looking at, whether it's, you know, resident-only access for streets, um, you know, other traffic calming devices and so forth. You know, I, I think this is probably not a topic for a single Traffic Advisory Council meeting, I think it's, it's a longer-term, more sort of strategic discussion. But I'd maybe ask if we can, you know, put that on the docket of something that they, uh, you know, give some thought to over the next several months so that we can think about, are there things that are, uh, you know, more strategic than just sort of, you know, one street at a time here? But things that we can think about town-wide that might help us address what, what probably is a contributor to traffic here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Santos?
Just jump off of what, um, Jonathan said, we all got the same-
Yep.
Yes.
Email, and I, um, had an interchange with the woman who was lovely. You know, Wakefield's a cut-through, has always been, I've, I've lived here virtually, you know, since I was whatever, four or five. In my street, Hillcrest Road, I knew when one-twenty-eight was backed up because back in the fourth grade, the cars would go, um, fast back then. Clearly Waze has made a difference, I live on a cut-through street right now. Um, Melrose, I cut through Melrose, so I drive to Oak Grove and I cut through Stonem and Melrose. And, um, Melrose does a, a great job of, first of all, having the flashing twenty-five, the whole city is twenty-five, we're not there yet, but the flashing twenty-five, and if I, like, it tells me I'm going twenty-six, I slow down to make sure, because I want to be very respectful in the neighborhood. They also have the no-turning on a certain time, so I, I would, I agree with you, it's not something we're doing tomorrow, it's several months, and I think everyone thinks their neighborhood needs to be protected, that's not going to happen though, because I think we live adjacent to one-twenty-eight, we're going to get cut through. But, um, Melrose, in my mind, does a very good, very, um, you know, they've clearly thought about which streets they want to keep. It's not every street, um, to keep away from cut-through, but they do a nice job, so I would say we'd look at them.
Counselor Danaka?
I'll, I'll let this buck go first.
Counselor Button?
Um, I, I just saw, I got this email and I didn't look into it, uh, Steve, I'm hoping you can explore, um, the watershed at Crystal Lake. There seemed to be a bunch of trees cut down, and, uh, a constituent asked DPW, who said it wasn't them, and it's a watershed, and as we've made a commitment to plant more trees, if you could find out what happened?
I, I actually got a phone call on this anonymous phone call today, so yes.
Great, perfect, so yes, that's all I know as well.
Counselor Danaka?
So, so I, I have a couple of things that I would like to bring up now for fut- for possibly, uh, a future meeting. One would be the WCP is asking that they, um, be put on an, a next agenda for the holiday stroll. So they want to come in and, um, present for, uh, approval, seek approval from the board to, uh, conduct their, uh, eleventh annual holiday stroll this year. So, uh, if they, possibility, possibility of being on the twenty-eighth docket, um, they can be notified and make their presentation at that, at that time. Constituent concerns, over the course of the last two weeks, three weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to people about cut-through traffic, but also pedestrian safety. Um, one of the areas that came up was, um, Lowell Street heading towards Four, uh, Four Corn- uh-
Four Corners.
Four Corners, thank you, I was saying Commons, it's Four Corners, trying to get to the Dolbeer School. If you are heading towards the lake on the cemetery side, there is no way of you getting across the street to the sidewalk side of Lowell Street unless you go all the ways back to Walton to do so. So there have, there's no way of, there's no crosswalk between Walton Street and-
Walton Park.
I mean, Walton Park, thank you again, Walton Park and Vernon Street. There's no crosswalk for them to come out of Evangelist Way or any of those side streets to get up. The concern that they have right now is that they would like to see a sidewalk put in going up towards the Dolbeer. If that can't happen, they're looking for relief from this board to enforce the no-parking-on-the-sidewalks component, because the cars that are on the, on the grass are forcing them into the street to walk their children to school. And again, we shouldn't be forcing anyone to walk into the street, they should be able to at least walk on the grass area all the way up to the Four Corners. The same conversation brought to people from Foster Street off of Vernon, asking the same question. They did some sidewalks, but they didn't do all of them, and there's no way for them to get across at their street unless they go all the ways down to Four Corners, but then they're walking either into the street or off of the street. There's, there's not sidewalks all the ways down on the Foster Street side, that's what they're saying, and there isn't, there is a couple of patches where it's not. Consideration on something that we could possibly do, everybody feels that there's a priority of their area. It all takes time, and that's what I've tried to express to them. First of all, we have to have someone go down and look at it, make sure that it's viable. If, if there is a car parked on the sidewalks, it's illegal in the town of Wakefield, you're not supposed to be on any sidewalk with your vehicle. Okay, I mean, we have an ordinance, there's a bylaw that's in place now, so if we have to start enforcing that so that pedestrians can stay on the sidewalk, uh, I mean, walk on the sidewalk, I mean, I would like to see if that could be possibly happen. The last thing I'm going to ask for is, we are still discussing the Envision project. And as the Envision project moves forward, we're getting closer and closer to getting to that twenty-five percent mark and sending it off to the DOT. The last forum that I went to, there were still two, maybe three different plans that they were talking about combining into one. Is this board going to see a copy of the presented plan to the DOT prior to it being sent to the DOT? And if we could see it, can we see it before it's sent to the DOT so that we can at least make comment on it? Because if there's three combined into one, I'd like to see what's being presented, at least I'm curious at this point. I mean, I know what all three maps said, and I know that some, there was changes on all three, but if we're at that twenty-five percent mark, I'd like to see which one we melded it into that we're going to say, okay, here we go, we, we want to send this off. Because if, unless we're asking for money, it doesn't have to go to the town meeting, from my understanding, is that correct, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we would be the, the last barrier before it went to the DOT.
Well, I think, a couple of things on that, um, one, I don't, I don't think we should be seeing ourselves as a barrier to a project that's beneficial to the town, but we're, we're not near the twenty-five percent mark yet.
Okay.
So, um, at, of course, at the appropriate time when we're, when we are there, as I mentioned, I think at the last meeting. Right now, VHB is working through feasibility of a lot of what has been discussed.
Yes.
Then running it past DOT, MassDOT to get just some preliminary feedback.
Okay.
And then based on that, they'll come back to us, they'll be able to answer a lot of questions, not a lot of questions, some questions that had, that they were unable to answer at the, at the last meeting that we had.
Right.
And then there'll be further public engagement with that knowledge, we're not, we're not there yet.
And, and most of us are aware of what VHB did say, even though we submit a twenty-five percent plan, it doesn't mean that it can't change.
Oh, it'll be changing.
Once it comes back from the, uh, the DOT, so there's still some changes that can be made, and the public has to understand that.
There, there will be a twenty-five percent plan, and then there will be changes all the way through until it's at one hundred percent. And VHB has said that, I think probably every single, every single public forum, that even once we're at twenty-five percent and we're not at twenty-five percent, this is not a twenty-five percent presentation to VHB at this point, uh, to a DOT, but once, you know, once we are at that point, yes, absolutely. It's, it, that will always be a design in pro- in, in, in progress.
Right, okay.
Absolutely.
That was my only, you know, my only, I would like to see what's going out at some point when it gets to that time, how's that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Um, just quickly, it's related to, to traffic advisory and, and maybe even pass-through. So I'm understanding from a constituent that the parking at the, um, entrance to Brightview, so if there's people parked there, it's turning that Crescent Street into basically a single road at that curve, and there's some safety concerns. So I just wanted that to be put on a list to look at for the future.
So what I'll do is I'll sit down with Town Administrator Mayo, we'll go through this feedback, and then whatever we can provide to TAC for further follow-up, we will. Um, just a reminder, some of these items can also be agenda items, and, you know, we have a, a process in place, you let me know by Tuesday, if you want to mount the agenda, then it gets added onto the agenda, because we could have a discussion in a, in a more robust way about them as well. But Mr. Mayo and I, let's go through that if, and then we'll, we'll pass along to the chief as well and Lieutenant Anderson. All right, thank you all for that, item number ten is chairman's comments, I'll, I'll make these brief. I thought that, uh, that, that's why I didn't say thank the chief yet, because I thought he was going to be here for this portion, but it's fine, but it's fine that he's not. But thank you, Chief Scory, for your participation tonight. The, we have ongoing efforts to identify, to, to figure out how to best identify, uh, parking within town. I know, um, Counselor Smith-Galvin, we've, we've often talked about the idea of the P's, to direct people to parking. Um, one of the, the more successful things that we've done through DPW at very little cost, but, uh, high impact is to define more parking spaces, and so I, I've been speaking with DPW about this, with Mr. Mayo as well. Um, we'll continue to do that, and part of the discussion will be where we can, um, allocate spaces that are perhaps merchant-only, but these are defined spaces. If you go down, for example, um, Albion Street, those are defined spots, and so it's very clear if there's a space available or not available. If you go down Main Street across from, um, in front of Greenwood Plaza, um, I believe there are some defined spots, but across there are not, or vice versa. Um, so we, we have a real inconsistency here. Um, part of, if you look at Town Hall, um, along Lafayette, we haven't defined parking spaces there. Those are often under, that's an often under, underutilized, um, section of the, of town as well for parking purposes. So, um, part of it, you know, part and parcel of what we're talking about is directing folks with the P's, um, we've been through Faverman Design, we have our, our new logo, we, or, or our, our new font that we're using, our new look and feel. So we can do things like adoptings, like, you know, P's with arrows, you know, to direct people to certain areas of parking, maybe Lafayette's one such example. I, I don't know, you know, maybe, um, Common, maybe somewhere else on Main, maybe Albion, whatever the case might be. Um, that's something that we, that is a work, a work in progress, and we're working through that. Next, the Tribe Board meeting, that is with the School Committee and the Finance Committee, that is on Thursday, October seventeenth. I've been working with- I've been working with the, the chairs of both of those committees as well. And thank you to Mr. Mayo for all of your assistance with, you getting the, all of that together for us. Again, that's, that'll be at 7:00. That'll be at the junior high in the auditorium, and it'll be the tri-board meeting where everyone will be present. And finally, the, the town council was able to have a, a town council strategic retreat this past week at, at the Americal. For those who participated, thank you for your participation. We, we talked a lot about strategies and priorities and moving forward. We had a really good discussion about alcohol policy and, and our role in that regard. And it was a really good opportunity to help us all get even more on the same page in terms of what priorities will look like going forward. And so I think there's a, a lot of work to be done, and a lot of willingness to do it. So that's always a, a good combination. No questions or comments, I'll move on to the next item. So item number 11 is licenses. 11A, we already took care of. That was for Hart-Torn House. So item 11B is a one-day liquor license requested by Christina Dixon. The applicant is seeking a one-day liquor license for a private event at the Americal Civic Center. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the one-day liquor license for Christina Dixon.
Second.
All right. Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is a one-day liquor license for Christina Dixon at the Americal Civic Center. All those in favor? With the unanimous vote of seven to zero, that is allowed. Item 11C is a Class II license. This is a renewal for quality auto service. This is an automotive, automotive repair shop located at 51 New Salem Street. They have submitted the application for renewal and are seeking renewal of their current license. I'll entertain a motion for the renewal of this current Class II license.
So, second.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Danakko. Any discussion on this renewal? Counselor Chines?
Just a question. Do we, other than sort of the, you know, kind of the typical lateness that we, we see some from some applicants, is there a reason why we're getting the application now?
I thi, the problem with these non-display Class II licenses is that maybe they don't really need it till they go to an auction or something.
Okay.
So is it late? Is it, I mean, so I think that's when it came in, but other than that, no, and he's been through the whole gamut, so he's, okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right. So the, the motion before you then is the, the renewal, the approval of the renewal of a Class II license for quality auto service. All those in favor?
Okay.
A vote of seven to zero. Motion carries. Item number 12 is gift acceptance. This is a, an item to accept gifts that have been given to the BB library. They include public printer donations and gardening-related publications. So I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the library gifts.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Danakko, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, then the motion before you is the acceptance of gifts to the BB library. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero vote. The motion carries. Item, item number 13 is matters not anticipated for the agenda. These would be any matters that have come up in the last 48 hours, therefore, precluding them from being included on the agenda, and in compliance with public notice requirements. Do we have any? All right. Thank you. Seeing none. Item number 14 is announcements and acknowledgements. This is the opportunity, again, for town councillors, town administrator, town council, and town clerk to offer recognition or any announcements to the public. Does anyone have any announcements or acknowledgements?
DPW director does.
All right. So I, I'll start then.
I have one before you.
So I, I'll start then.
Yeah.
I do want to welcome the newest member to our, our Wakefield family. Congratulations to our DPW director, Joe Conway, and his wife, Kim, on the birth of their daughter. Molly Ann Conway was born on the, on Friday the 4th. She weighed in at eight pounds, two ounces, and mom, baby, and family are doing very well at home. So congratulations, Joe and Kim, and, and welcome to the world, Molly Ann.
And Chickie, and the whole family.
The entire family. The entire family, I know that is.
She must be over the moon.
Very proud family.
That's awesome.
Indeed. Anything else? Counselor Smith-Galvin?
Just quickly, there is, as part of the Envision Wakefield Resilient Program, there is a business resilience workshop on October 16 at 8:00 AM. Thought it was interesting to hear from the Health Department about their activities around kind of planning for emergencies, and this is an opportunity for businesses to also understand kind of resources and, and how to respond to natural or man-made disasters. So encourage businesses to look into that.
Mr. Mayo?
Jonathan.
Counselor Chines?
Sure. So thank you. You know, I just wanted to highlight, and I know that folks in, in the room here are aware, but for, for folks at home, that the State Senate unanimously, unanimously, excuse me, passed the Student Opportunity Act on Thursday. You know, very exciting. I mean, this would relate to the funding of schools for communities in Massachusetts. You know, something that would present some opportunity for additional state funding for Wakefield, for the schools, both through the changes to the foundation budget calculation, additional money for charter school reimbursement, as well as additional money for the Special Education Circuit Breaker Fund. And so while we don't know what those funds will be, obviously, good news as we think about the opportunity to expand some of the services that we have at the Wakefield Public Schools. Also does add, add money into the Mass School Building Authority. And so as we think about the high school project, some opportunity there. Hopefully, that they'll be able to take on more projects, including our own. Still needs House approval. My understanding from Senator Lewis is that that will be in front of the House in the next two to three weeks. And then obviously, the governor's signature would be the, the next step after that. But certainly, you know, good news there. And I, I do want to thank and recognize Senator Lewis for his work in advocating for the legislation. This has been, you know, really one of his, one of his priorities since he joined the legislature. And so it's great for Wakefield, and certainly great for other communities in the Commonwealth to see that moving forward. Just wanted to highlight two things. First of all, Walk to School Day, Day was last week. You know, great example of sort of showing our kids the importance of healthy habits, of, you know, getting out of cars and, and communicate, commuting in, in more environmentally sustainable ways. A lot of work goes into that, and so I just wanted to recognize both the Wakefield Police Department, the folks, the staff in the Wakefield Public Schools, many of whom volunteered their time to kind of come in early and help with it, and all the parent volunteers as well that made that possible.